And what we want to do is we want to provide service to all the incidents that we go on. And a rapid response is really key to a lot of those incidents. Getting there fast to change an outcome. What I like to tell people is how long can you hold your breath? We try to get there as quickly as we can, provide those interventions that's going to save a life.
If history repeats itself at Sparks, then one day, one of these firefighters will climb the ranks and build the 11th spot on the wall in the Hall of Fire Chiefs. We close this installment of Spotlight on Sparks with the mayor and city council honoring U.S. Olympian Jake Dalton. Jake was one of the five members of the U.S. Men's Gymnastics Team at the London Olympics. Jake, in his scrum spart, represented his nation with grace and dignity. We are proud of our hometown hero.
Well, we're just about out of time, and that does it for another installment of Spotlight on Sparks. It's happening here. We hope you enjoyed meeting some of the city staff working for you, and we urge you to visit livingwithfire.info because the information there saves lives and because it takes a community to survive a wildfire. Please be safe. I'm Adam Mayberry. Thanks for watching.
Okay, we'll make this a kind of a working lunch. Open up the Spark City Council workshop of, what is today, June 9, 2014, with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Carrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Thornley.
Here.
And City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Comments from the public? Anyone want to speak on their comments from the public? Seeing now, let's move on to number three, discussion of and possible direction to staff regarding proposed amendments to SMC Charter, Chapter 5, to provide for the issuance of business licenses of medical marijuana establishments. Go ahead, boys.
Okay, so the purpose of today's workshop is really to review draft of the ordinance and basically decide.
Until they have a land use approval, land use entitlement. And again, the process for that is the administrative review process for all four types of MMEs. So what does the proposed code say? First of all, it requires that all MMEs operating in Sparks be licensed per this new section, and we're proposing that be added as a Chapter 5.80 of the Sparks Municipal Code, and that consistent with our understanding of what the state requires, that only individuals, i.e., therefore not business entities, may be licensed. So it needs to be ultimately tracked back to a responsible individual.
Armando?
Yes.
I read that it was the license was issued to the individual and to the establishment, the address. So it is both of them?
It is both, but for our purposes, there has to be an individual on the hook as well.
Okay.
Yeah. On the second point on this slide, persons that qualify for compassionate exception for self-cultivation are required to register with the city but not subject to the fees. That's the way it's currently drafted. We have had some questions about that and about, in particular, a concern about whether we would be, under a public records request, subjecting someone who is registered with the city to potentially identify themselves to others in the community who maybe have ill intentions. And so we are going to be looking into this in particular. And I just talked to Sergeant Walsh, and one option may be that if the state is providing those individuals who are going to be allowed to continue to grow their own, if you will, to have paperwork that identifies not only what they're allowed to grow, but also where they're allowed to grow it. And if those persons are required to have that in their possession, then perhaps then this requirement for them registering with the city would not be necessary. So we will look at that, and we will address that issue and modify it if necessary based on what we find out from the state between now and when we bring this back.
Armando, can you clarify, when you say proposed code, this is what we're proposing?
Yes.
Okay. So I want to make a clear distinction between state and what Sparks is doing.
Yeah, so there should have been, as part of your packet, there should have been this document that says, "Business licenses for medical marijuana establishments," and it's the draft. And so this is the draft code itself that we're proposing. And so really, what I'm doing in this presentation along with Mr. Thompson is basically going through it with you and just, you know, reviewing it, pointing out the main points, if you will, and then looking for direction before we finalize this to bring back for consideration, formal consideration by the council. One provision is that, and let me very quickly just give a little background in terms of how we crafted this. We really looked at the code for licensing to other types of privileged license, gaming and for the sale of alcohol. And so we worked from those two existing sections in our code to craft this section. So a lot of what is in the version that has been provided to you reflects a lot of what we already do for privileged licenses. So one section does allow for the license to be revoked by the city council. It would be after, essentially, you got a recommendation from your police chief to revoke it. And so that's a provision of this code. The licenses also, or this section of the code is also drafted to provide that if the individual holding the state registration certificate loses their certification, that the license would be revocable at that point. The proposed code does...
Armando, excuse me. Do these licenses expire at all, or are they renewed every year?
I believe they're renewable by the state. But in our case, they would have to be renewed annually.
Okay.
Just like any other business license.
Nice.
So the proposed code does delegate certain duties to the chief of police, and these are, you know, specified in more detail in the ordinance itself, but in general, the chief of police is authorized to do inspections of the MME establishment to verify that MME employee and agent registration cards issued by the state are, you know, that everyone who's required to have one, in fact, has one. And again, you know, taking a page from the way we regulate gaming, we're not looking for the city to do independent background investigations, et cetera. We are in large measure relying on the state's responsibility to do that. But our police chief, our police department, would have the responsibility of verifying that, in fact, everyone who's required to have one of these cards has the card. There's, this next one, the Establishment of Safety Plan and Operational Requirements section was also attached to your, to the agenda packet. And that's the document that looks like this, Safety Plan and Operational Requirements. And so the intent of this, which is essentially incorporated by reference, you know, we may decide over time that, you know, these safety, the safety plan and operational requirements needs to be modified. Rather than putting these specifically into the ordinance, what we're proposing to do is to incorporate them by reference. And so if they need to be amended over time, you know, the police department would have that ability without us having to come back in and amend the municipal code. So they address, for example, the, you know, the exterior interior requirements, a lot of this has to do with security, operational requirements, the transport of medical marijuana products, and then some specific requirements that would be applicable to dispensaries. So certainly, if you have any comments about these, we'd be interested in hearing them, as would Sergeant Walsh and Chief Allen, I'm sure. And then again, as I already noted, they provide for the chief of police as the, as a designee of the council for the purposes of when license revocation might be warranted. There are other provisions, or there is a provision that allows other city officials and officers to inspect MMEs. You know, the fire marshal in particular comes to mind. So there's that in the proposed code as well. Okay, fees. For most businesses in the city of Sparks, basically, when someone comes in for a business license, there is an $80 fee, basically, for the first fee, for the first year, I'm sorry. And then thereafter, when they renew their license, they would, they're subject to, based on self-reported information, a fee that is based on $1 per $1,000 of receipts, gross receipts, after the first $10,000. In this case, taking into account that, to some extent, you know, there are some additional concerns on the public safety side, on the law enforcement side in particular, the fees that we're proposing are different, they're higher. For cultivation facilities and facilities for the production of edible and infused products, we're proposing a base fee, and again, we're making a distinction between a base fee and an additional fee that would be based on gross receipts, $3,000 per year. And for dispensaries, that amount is proposed at $5,000. In addition to this...
Armando, where'd you get those numbers?
We, you know, Councilman Carrigan, I looked at the information that was available when we drafted this. We looked at what was being done in Colorado, in the city of Denver in particular, where they have. And we weren't looking at recreational facilities, we were looking at medical marijuana facilities. What they were doing in Colorado, the information from Arizona was harder to come by. We, you know, we reached out, I think through the manager's office, to the city of Reno and Washoe County. Washoe County is basically proposing to charge MMEs the same fees as they charge every other business, although, again, that's been subject to some discussion, and as far as I understand, it is not done yet. But that's sort of what we earmarked to, Councilman Carrigan.
Do we have any idea how much each one of these facilities make? I mean, you know, does cultivation make more than edible and infused projects, products, or do dispensaries make more? Do we have any idea?
I don't have a clear handle on that. I did contact the state. I tried to discuss with the staff down there what they anticipated these establishments will do, if you will, in terms of gross receipts annually. And, you know, they weren't able to provide me with any clear projections of what they anticipate these...
Because I'm just wondering what, why dispensaries are more than anything, you know?
Well, two reasons, to some extent. And one has to do with the fact that dispensaries as the retail outlets, where the public will be going, are where we anticipate, on the, you know, on the police department's part, additional calls for service. And so to some extent, you know, the, you know, we have some reason to believe that to the extent that there's higher costs of service associated with this particular type of business, it'll be associated in particular with the dispensaries. The second aspect of this is frankly, you know, there's going to be two dispensaries in the city of Sparks. Those are essentially geographically tied, and, you know, to the extent that the fees would be higher, you know, that's where it made sense to charge the higher fees.
Okay, thanks.
In terms of the quarterly fees on gross receipts, and here, in this case, we're looking, again, for quarterly payments as opposed to annual payments, which is typically what we do with most businesses, except gaming. On gaming, we get our payments quarterly. And basically, at the end of the quarter, they have 30 days to report their receipts and then pay their fee for the next quarter. So that's what we're proposing to do in this case, just as we do with gaming. So in addition to the base fee, and based on the gross receipts in excess of $10,000 for the previous quarter, basically, we're proposing the same fee as we do for other businesses for cultivation and facilities for the production of edible and infused products. And on the dispensary side, $5 for $1,000 in gross receipts for the dispensaries. So...
Do you have that slide?
Oh, I'm sorry. So I'll, again, just, and I'm sorry, I didn't put the slide up, but cultivation and production, $1 for each $1,000. That's the same as we charge other businesses in the city of Sparks currently. And for dispensaries, again, where we anticipate the higher public service costs at $5 for 1,000.
1 tenth of 1 percent?
1 tenth of 1 percent is what we charge other businesses. This would be essentially five times the rate for the dispensaries.
What's that?
Five times the rate for dispensaries that we charge for...
Yeah, but that's not even 1, that's 1 tenth of 1 percent. Okay. Anybody think that's low, besides me?
We were, and again, we're, the reason we're doing this workshop...
I would really like to know what the expect, you know, what's, how are the dispensaries? What's an ounce going to go for? Does anybody have, what higher are they going to sell? Anybody have a clue? I mean, how much are these, you know, establishments going to make?
And I would suggest to you that the people who know that are probably the people who are proposing to bring the dispensaries, you know, to the market. I'm sure they have business plans. I, you know, that...
Well, I think that makes a big difference to me. These guys are going to pull down, you know, $8 million a year, and we're only going to charge $5 per 1,000, you know?
Well, the other thing I would suggest to you is that, at the end of the day, we're probably not talking a lot of money in terms of overall revenue to the city from these, from these...
Why? That's what I'm, that's why I'm asking the question. Why aren't we going to make some money on this? I mean, I'll be, you know, they're not putting the dispensary up because they're good people and they want to help everybody. They want to make money. Well, they may want to do that, too. Since I'm on the record here, I'm going to be nice, but, you know, they're in it to make money.
I...
I mean, we're going to have a lot, you know, our police department's going to have a lot to do, so let's pay for it. That's how I feel about it.
Now, well, just for context purposes, though, in terms of, if you were to think about aggregating all of the MMEs that might set up shop in Sparks, whether they're dispensaries or cultivation facilities, the gross from them would have to approach 100 to 120 million dollars a year from all of them to generate for the city of Sparks what one, what the Walmart on the Pyramid Highway does, for example. You know, a robust restaurant is probably going to do 5 to 10 million dollars a year in revenues. So, and so we've looked at that. I mean, I, you know, I ran the numbers, and, you know, we're not necessarily talking about a lot of revenue from this industry because there's such relatively few establishments at the end of the day. But again, we're here for direction, so...
Yeah, what does gaming pay us, percentage-wise?
And I may have to defer to Lisa on that. She's here. I don't recall at the top of my head, I mean, I looked at it. You know, we charge on a per-device basis.
Lisa Hunterman, City of Sparks Customer Service Department, and I specialize in business licensing. Gaming is currently paid based on the type of machine per quarter. So generally, like, slots are $30 per quarter per machine. Table games are roughly higher, $120 per quarter, per game.
So, yeah, we, you know, this, I mean, I could tell you what the city of Las Vegas just...
Yeah, that's maybe my next question.
You know, let me give you some...
I'm sorry, I'm taking over, but...
This just went out last week. I guess it just took this action last week. And I can't tell you, their fees are proposed, are not proposed, are much higher as adopted. Remember what page that is on to?
1. I'm only looking at that. My understanding, too, that...
Currently, only 2% of the population has a medical marijuana card. We're not talking a huge industry here to begin with.
I'm confusing, or we're confusing, I think, the license fees and any additional taxes we might be able to add on. Will we be able to do that?
We can't add on anything. This is it.
So you have to do it in the business licensing process?
Would you like me to address dispensaries first?
Sure, I'd just like to get an idea what they're doing.
A medical marijuana dispensary that's going to be licensed in the city of Las Vegas would be subject to a $75,000 annual fee.
Okay.
And then there is, and that is essentially a base fee.
Okay.
Okay. On top of that...
So we're super bargain right there?
We're super bargain.
Okay.
In that respect. Now...
So that's worth a plane ride to come from Vegas to Sparks? No, I'm serious. 80 bucks round trip on a leder.
And then they have semi-annual, supposed to quarterly, which is what we're proposing, gross revenue fees for medical marijuana dispensaries. I can tell you that, you know, there was, there was a lot of concern amongst the would-be dispensary owners down in Las Vegas, that, you know, those would be prohibitively high fees, but you're probably, they're probably still going to get applications, right?
How about Clark County?
I don't have that information with me, Mr...
Do they have it on for $10,000, I mean, for $1,000?
Well, they have, they have a gross receipts fee, again, it's semi-annual, and it would It looks like it would be at, it depends on where they're going, the sale is from the public, from the dispensary to the public, or from the production facility to the dispensary. So there's, you know, they're basically taxing, I mean, at each stage, like the state is doing.
Were we told we can't do that now? That it can't be taxed head-on end? That has to be taxed flow-through?
There was, I can't remember who, one of the meetings, that we can't do that now?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we were told from the state that their interpretation of the sales tax rule, as they wrote the state law, may be precluding them from taxing at each of the various product movements, and that they might only be able to tax at the dispensary for sales to the direct customer. They were researching the language... They were researching the language that they wrote and the interpretation. They'd had some outside help with that language. We've not heard what their final distribution was on it. But from a business license standpoint, there's nothing that precludes us from attaching a fee at each of the transfer of product. The inventory rules will require that there is a dollar associated with it, and that has to be reported. And so that is how we would be determining our fee. And to add, to add some perspective to what Armando just told you about, the licensing fee for the City of Las Vegas specifically, their annual fee for the dispensaries is consistent, it's just slightly higher than what they charge for standalone alcohol establishments today. So if you were to bring in a bar pub-type restaurant, they're in the 50 to $60,000 annual upfront today plus then a transaction fee. So while it sounds like a lot, it's not. The way they're set up, it's only slightly higher than what they do for the alcohol-privileged licenses they do today.
Armando, so if, let's say we can do cumulative, that all four of these, we have a total of nine tenths of a percent tax if it makes it through all four, which nothing has to go through all four there. Some can go three, so it's between eight tenths and nine tenths, less than a penny, 1% tax throughout the whole system. When we were talking about this whole program getting started, if I remember, we have to have about two to two and a half FTEs for the city to manage this business. Is that correct? We get, you know, we have a full-time police officer, we've got at least a half-time code enforcement officer, we've got some accounting issues, we've got some employees. Is that correct?
Councilman Schmidt, I don't, I don't recall specifically that we had an FTE estimate, but, I mean, there obviously would be some staffing costs, particularly on the public, on the public's side. You know, I would, you know, we anticipate, you know, patrol, et cetera. What that translates to into, from a FTE perspective, I'm not sure. The police department has proposed to designate a marijuana officer who would be the person responsible for overseeing, you know, these businesses and their compliance with our code in particular and with the safety and operational plan requirements. Their, you know, code enforcement, you know, potentially some code enforcement as there is with any business. But I think your primary costs are going to be on the, on the, on the police side.
I remember when we talked about this, that everyone had a different issue, what the department was going to be in there. And we were told that this is a moneymaker, that we're going to be able to help offset those costs. It's very, very apparent that we're a long shot from being able to pay for those costs. Even if you add in your sales tax, you get, you know, 11 cents sales tax out of $100 on that, you're, you're a long ways off from paying for this program. So as we sit here, what I see right now, you just caused some more layoffs in the City of Sparks by doing this program. There's no way in the world under this program, you're going to pay even close to your cost the city's going to now incur. And I, and I think, you know, Mr. Kerrigan's going to ask the amount of business we're going to do? That question's been asked from day one. And that should have been the basis of the program we put together, is how much volume is here, how much dollars are there, and then work backwards from there. But now, we're now in a position where, oh, we're trying to figure out how to go ahead and tax this thing to make money. And I don't, I'm not even sure if you can put 70, if you put 75,000 on each dispensary, you're only going to raise $150,000. And you've probably got a quarter of a million dollars additional cost to the city there.
Okay. With regard to labs, frankly, the proposal on the table is to treat them as we would any other business. I mean, at the end of the day, they may be, this may be something that an assay, one of the existing assay labs takes on. We frankly haven't had any inquiries from anybody looking to operate a lab in the City of Sparks yet. Whether that's also the case in the city of Reno or in Washington County, I don't know. But this is, this is an important cog in terms of making this industry work because it's required by state law. But at this juncture, you know, if we, you know, basically, they handle, you know, very minute quantities of marijuana for purposes of testing, and it's essentially in a assay lab. I mean, so we would anticipate that this business, if it lands in Sparks, will probably be handled by one of the existing labs at some point in time. So in terms of next steps and schedule, we have concluded that because we are proposing to charge a higher, higher fees for one specific type of business, that a business impact statement is required. You know that box on the front of staff reports that typically we check is not being required because it's not a rule? In this case, we do anticipate that it's necessary. And so we have researched what the process is because, you know, we, it's been a long time since we've done a business impact statement. And so I'm going to ask Tim Thompson to address for you just what's involved in this process.
So the business impact statement process is about a six-to-eight week process at the minimum. It involves staff drafting a notice regarding the potential impacts of the, in this case, the proposed licensing fee. We then need to identify some stakeholders, and then we send the notice out to those stakeholders with a 15-day comment and review period to follow. We anticipate that while we're awaiting comments, that we will start work on the business impact statement itself. Once we receive the comments, those would then be incorporated into, into the document. I will point out that any serious objections could make this process take a little bit longer, but we, we do anticipate having a business impact statement before you on the July 28 city council meeting, which would be one meeting, what does it say? One meeting, a meeting preceding any regular meeting to be held to adopt the proposed rule. So in anticipation of adopting the fees in the first meeting in August, we would need to have this before you in that last meeting in July.
So that's where we are on this. Again, we, you know, we're looking for your input. You know, if there's a desire to bring this forward with significantly higher fees, we can certainly revise this proposal to reflect that. We will, you know, whatever, whatever the direction is here, we will reflect it in the, in the revised version of this, these proposed code amendments that we sent out for review with our business impact statement process. And then, and then we'll bring it back for future action by the city council after we've completed that business impact statement.
Okay, questions? Difficult to do and difficult to figure out what revenues are going to be here and those kind of things. This is brand-new, first time out of the bucket here. I don't know how to project that kind of, what's going to happen income-wise. You know, the only thing that concerns me, we can make fees as high as we want, I understand that, but if we make them too high, then they won't be opening any businesses in Sparks. If the county's significantly lower and Reno's significantly lower, then it won't make any difference. They'll go there and open them there, and we may not have any dispensaries, which, you know, in the long run is okay with me, too. But it's difficult to figure out how these things are, how much money they're going to make and what kind of revenues we're going to get from them. So that's, that's the difficult thing. First time out of the barrel here, it's really, really difficult. So I guess what I would think is we need a starting point somewhere, and if it, down the future, if it's not working, maybe we can come back and change fees or have additional fees, less fees, whatever. Is that always a possibility?
That's a possibility. I mean, I suppose that once you've had your, you know, whatever businesses have established, they're probably going to, they're going to be here. You know, you could, you could, you could do the same thing that you could do with, you know, our business license fee structure in general, right? Which is revisit it and, and change it.
That's why I was wondering what Clark County was going to do as far as the fee. If Las Vegas, City of Las Vegas is going to do 75,000 and County of Washington, Clark County's only going to do 20, big difference. Where are you going to go?
Yeah, and I guess to follow up on Mr. Driscoll's comments, I mean, to some extent, we looked at, you know, what we charge other businesses for business licenses, and we basically looked at that as the framework, the context. You know, our fees for licenses for businesses that sell alcohol are relatively low. These would be higher than what we charge that type of business. And so that was, that was the starting point. You know, as you pointed out, if you're going to open a tavern in Las Vegas, the business license for that is much, much higher than it is in the City of Sparks currently. So that was, that was the starting point in general, was looking at what we charge to the businesses.
Okay, questions, suggestions? Julia?
So I think we need to figure out, well, first of all, I'd like to request that when we're doing workshops, we look at going back to a meeting room where it's a dialogue setup? Because I think that's a bit more productive for when we're really, we're doing some work here today. We're not necessarily just taking a recommendation from staff. And I know we've had construction, but future workshops, I think it'd be great if we could get back into that more circle, everybody's having part of the conversation. So I think we need to figure out what it is we're trying to accomplish. Because there's several different ways you can approach this. I completely agree with the mayor. Nobody has any idea how much revenue is going to be generated, including the business folks who are sitting in the room who are trying to put together their business plans. Because we don't, we've got something that I don't believe exists anywhere else in the state of Nevada, which is the state is going to set the marketplace because they're going to try to estimate what the market is going to demand in the first year, and they're going to limit production based on that market. And so first year, it's going to be a guess. And then after we have a year's experience under our belt, we'll know a little bit more. We don't know how many people are out there that want a medical marijuana card and qualify for one, but haven't done it yet because they weren't willing to grow for themselves. And I think the big variable we don't know is, we're one of the few states who have allowed recognizing a medical marijuana state from, a medical marijuana card from another state. And so we don't know how many people from California, when they're visiting, will be choosing to visit our dispensaries. So to say that there's a business model or that we can make any kind of meaningful projections, I think, is a little bit ludicrous at this point. Nobody, nobody. The state doesn't know, the business people don't know, we don't know. So that said, what do we want to accomplish? Do we want to try to cover our costs? Mr. Schmidt suggested that, we could look at that. Really have the staff go back and say, this is what we think is going to cost us in the first year, and try to build a structure that at least on the fees side comes close to covering that. Although, again, it's going to be a guess because we don't know what the income's going to be. Do we want to encourage businesses to come to Sparks? Or do we want to discourage those businesses to come to Sparks? The dispensaries, there's only two, but everybody else can go wherever they want to go. So if we don't want them here, we can put some significantly higher fees in than their partners. If we do want them to come here, then we can keep them a little bit lower. Or, you know, and here's my, my big concern, no matter what we do, it's going to be passed on to the customer. And so if you believe, as I believe, that there are medical patients out there who need this product, a product that's not likely to be covered by insurance anytime soon, I think we need to be careful about putting so many fees on it gouging to such a level that children who really need this drug are going to have access to it. So, I mean, I think that's something else that we need to consider. I think the staff has, you know, picked a number that is as good as any other number, but until we know what we want to accomplish as a city and give them that direction, they're stabbing in the dark just like everybody else. So I personally would be perfectly comfortable with what they've proposed because it's at the dispensary level, the ones that are going to have the impact to our staff higher than average. We will still have a share of the sales tax revenue that comes to our community. So there should be a bump there, though. I agree, it's, it's a Walmart. It's not, it's not, it's not the Mecca. You know, we didn't hit the lottery here. And, and as far as anybody telling us that we were going to make a whole bunch of money, I never heard anybody tell us we were going to make a whole bunch of money. I heard a lot of folks up at the DIA saying we were going to make some money, but I never heard anybody tell us that this was going to be a moneymaking deal. So, I mean, I'd like to get folks into business in Sparks. I think that we have some great facilities in our, in our industrial district that are appropriate for cultivation, are appropriate for testing, are appropriate for processing. And then let's make sure that we cover the impacts on the two dispensaries, where the impact's really going to be.
Okay, anyone else? Questions? Suggestions? Mr. Kerrigan?
Well, you know, I think... We ought to, let's talk about this, you know, Julie came off with the, you know, humanitarian part of it, and I'm going to come off with the, let's get realistic about it. We at least have to cover our costs. And I guarantee you that if we don't have anybody dispensing marijuana in the city, the police department is not going to shed a tear, okay? I can tell you that right now. I just think that if you're going to, if we're going to do something like this, we need to put a higher fee on it. And if nobody comes, great. They don't come then, okay? That's just the way it goes. I don't have a problem with that at all.
On all of the different aspects?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it at all. If we put a fee out there and they say, okay, Sparks is too expensive, we're going to go somewhere else. Well, guess what? Then we don't have the heartburn of having to regulate anything. Okay? But I don't, I would like to see us, you know, cover our costs, but make, you know, make something above that. And I just think that the 3,000 or 5,000, I think that's too low, and what, $1 on 1,000? That's way too low. You know, I would rather say, well, what's the sales tax in the state or in the county? And say at least we'll put that much percentage on somebody's dispensing, I mean, all the way through at seven and a half percent. I wouldn't have a problem with that at all. Because we're looking at what? Two dispensaries, right?
Yes, sir.
And how many other?
Well, the other, you know, all I can tell you is what we received in the first...
Okay, how many, how many?
We received three applications for cultivation facilities, and in each case, they're also proposing a production facility. So technically, they would be six different businesses. Really, in reality, they're, you know, three, three joint facilities, if you will. But they would, you know, they'd be treated as separate businesses. Now, that was, that was the first application date. That was last Wednesday. You know, we have another one coming up on the 20th.
But here's the reality of it. If the state gets all these applications and there's nowhere to go, okay? In other words, if they have the application and then, and there's nowhere to go, then what good is the application? So in other words, there may be more people coming and saying, well, we tried to do it in Vegas, but, you know, they're full. Or, you know, because I guess they have the same restrictions we do, right? For the number?
They have, they have dispensary restrictions on the cultivation...
I mean, that's, that's my brother. I mean, I, you know, I like to cover the costs and put some on top of that.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Armando, since this project started back in December to rush this ordinance on through, has there been a cost code assigned to this so accounting can go ahead and keep track of what will be spent to date in this project?
Councilman Schmidt, we have not been tracking time to date on the preparation of these ordinances.
I want to go out on a wild limb here and say that the city's probably spent 100 grand already in trying to develop it. And the speed that this ordinance and this thing's been done, it's, there has been a tremendous amount of time in both planning and legal office and accounting and the police department to go ahead and make it where we're at today. You know, that is already being subsidized by the taxpayers. I think that there was at this DIA, these people thinking that this is a moneymaker. I'm voting for it because it's a moneymaker for the City of Sparks. It's going to help us with our burden of our budget. Staff heard those comments, and staff never stood up and said, no, wait a minute now, this is going to cost the taxpayers money, not make money for the, for this city. So I think we have to fundamentally ask the question, are we going to make all the citizens of the City of Sparks subsidize this program? That's what it comes down to. If the answer that comes back yes, then you need to bring it back to the council and say, we're going to be as cheap as possible here, and we're going to make 100,000 citizens pay for this project. If it says no, we're not going to ask the citizens to go and subsidize this, then we need to figure out what it's going to cost each and every department to do this and build a tax structure, obviously. You don't have data to go ahead and take, but you're going to make some reasonable assumptions off of what other places have done and come up with a tax program that's going to pay for this. I think that's imperative. I think that's our job. Just to sit down and look at a program and find out that we're going to go in a hole at the very beginning, or if it's going to make money, or if it's going to be revenue-neutral. That's our job, to do that. And I would say that instead of having the rush to get this thing done and out in the streets when people start selling marijuana, we do our jobs.
Well, I can certainly say that on staff's part, by and large, you know, basically, what we've done is we have responded to a change in state law. And, you know, this, the state has moved forward with this. And so we have basically responded by doing the code work, if you will, to put in place zoning. And then, this is the second part, the licensing aspect of this. If, certainly, if it is the council's desire that we take some additional time and really do additional research and try to... do additional research, and try to come up with as careful of estimates in terms of both what it will cost in terms of the provision of services, as well as in terms of what the revenue side of this might be, then certainly, we can do that.
Ms. Lawson?
Well, I can't imagine, number one, just from my manufacturing background, it's... If we use Mr. Schmidt's number of $100,000, that means we've had four employees do nothing but medical marijuana for five weeks. That's the only job they've done for five weeks since November. I find that hard to believe. I find it hard to believe that the police are going to spend one full-time officer to monitor six facilities, 40 hours a week, 365 days a year. I find that hard to believe also. So, we start getting a little too... What this cost is, I don't see where the cost is. You've got two businesses. It's incumbent on those businesses, those two dispensaries, to make it safe so that my grandmother, or my wife, or my daughter is safe and they feel comfortable going there. That's their business plan. They need people to go there so they make money. So, I don't see the big problem with this whole thing. And you're going to... I'm going to be hard-pressed to believe an argument that it's going to take two and a half employees, full-time employees, to monitor the two businesses, six businesses, whatever it is, eight businesses. It's just unfathomable to me that it's going to take that kind of time. So, I'm okay with where it is today. I'm okay if we look at it in a year, and I think in the motion, in the ordinance, that it will be reviewed in a year. We put it back up in a year, and let's review it, and let's see if we have some actual costs. But right now, this is just a wild-ass guess. We have no clue.
Mr. Schmidt?
You know, I don't want to rush into this. I think that maybe your fees are okay. I'm not... I don't know. We don't know. But I know we have to remain flexible, because the legislature's already said that they've underestimated this whole deal, and they're going to make a lot of changes down there. So, we want... We don't want to lock ourselves in. We want to be sure that we can change it in six months or a year, whatever it happens to be. I don't know if your fees are right on. I don't know. But I'm not against higher fees either.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. When we do a business impact statement, when we're increasing a tax outside of the normal, what we charge everybody else, is that correct?
We have reviewed that section of statute, and we believe that in this case, a business impact statement is called for, because we are basically proposing higher fees for one particular type of business.
And... But if we took and we lowered that fee at a later date, we don't have to do a business impact statement over again to lower the fee?
I don't believe so, no.
So, in order to do the fees we're doing right now, we've got to have an impact statement. So, we're going to do it. Might as well do it to go ahead and cover our cost. And if we've underestimated our cost or overestimated our cost, we can come back and reduce that fee later on.
And again, we have not generated an estimate of costs. We, you know, we've never said it's going to take X FTE to do this.
I'm giving an example here that if we come back and we lower our fees later on, we can do that without a business impact statement. We have to do one for what you proposed already.
Correct.
We should do it, a business impact statement that covers our cost. And then, if we... Our costs are too... Are not what we thought it was, then we can go back and lower that. We don't have to redo a business impact fee. But if our costs come out exceedingly higher than that, we have to do another business impact statement to go ahead and redo that, correct?
That would be correct, yes.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Carrigan?
No, I just want to point out, so, you know...
We're going to make... If you propose fees for the cultivation, we're going to make about, what? $1,000, a million, about? Like 900, because you've got to subtract $10,000 from it, right? So, totally, we're going to get, for a cultivation, we're going to get $5,000 a year, if they make a million dollars.
That's correct.
Okay. Nobody has a problem with that.
Plus the sales tax.
What's that?
Plus the sales tax.
No, we're not going to get sales tax, because we're going to get it back from the state in this, you know, the same amount of, you know, pettiness that we get at anything else, because it's not point-of-sale. But I'm just pointing that out. So, for every million dollars that something makes in the city, if it had to do with marijuana, it would get us about $1,000 bucks.
That's correct.
Okay.
And again, that's my... That was my point, you know.
Yeah, that's my guess. We're going to make $5,000, you know, and maybe $10,000 on the dispensary. So, that's not even going to... I don't think that covers any cost, myself.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just bring up Ms. Ratty's point that, you know, sales taxes, there's an increase in this, but there's also offsetting loss and things that they're not going to buy, because we don't instantly raise the economy up, the 7% cover the sales taxes. So, in the business impact statement, is he going to cover the sales tax?
No. And the intent of the business impact statement is to ascertain essentially what the impact on these businesses is, the formation of these businesses, their viability from the rule, the rule in this case being the higher... The fee. And so, it really looks at that and not, you know... It's not a economic impact statement. It's really an analysis of what impact the rule, the fee, has on the formation of these businesses.
Because for me, it does include that. Because if 100% of the new sales tax is generated, it's not... Nothing's deducted from another sale that would generate sales tax, then we get a true picture of what that business is going to be, how much it's going to generate, and what cost it's going to cover. If only 25% of new sales tax is going to be new revenue, because the other 75 is to be taken from, you know, groceries, or gas, or whatever somebody else would buy to create sales tax. And that obviously lowers the whole thing down. Again, you're not covering your costs. So, to me, the business impact statements would include what the business is going to do as far as to the total picture of things. Do we generate $700,000 in sales taxes because of this? At that point, I'm easy with $5,000 baseline. That works. If it generates $20,000 in new sales tax, you're not covering your cost. You're not even beginning to cover your cost.
Okay, anyone else?
I have one thing, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
To the extent it matters on the business impact statement, it'd be required any time you impose or increase a fee, but also if you change the basis for the calculation of that fee. So, a straight reduction with no change in the basis of calculation would not require another business impact statement. But if the council wished to revisit the way in which we determine what the fee is, it would be.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
But if we only...
The business impact fee statement and that public process really only talks about the impact to the business, not the impact to the city, nor the impact to the community as a whole, correct?
That's correct.
So, the analysis that we did, for example, when we decided to get into the Starbonds business, we didn't look at, is that taking a purchase away from another area? How much of that tax revenue is being moved into one district versus another district? We took our best information... I mean, we looked at, but we took our best information and said this was what we think is going to happen. There was an economic projection that was put together. This is what we think is going to happen. And then, what actually happened, happened. It's going to be the same here, and the business impact statement doesn't call for that analysis. So, if we choose to direct them to do that analysis, then that's what we should choose to do. But the business impact statement's not going to get us there.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, you know, to my earlier point to you was, again, if, you know, if really, if at the end of the day, what the council was saying is that, you know, you want more analysis, both on the cost side as well as on the revenue side, before we actually bring forward an ordinance for action, then, you know, we would... That would be the direction you would give us. And, you know, maybe it goes so far as to say that, you know, we want you to do an economic impact analysis of some sort. That's certainly, you know, one option you have in terms of giving us direction.
If we were to give you that direction, would you require outside assistance?
We would probably require some outside assistance.
So, that's the question. Do we want to spend some money to get some economic data here?
What are you going to accomplish? Do they know any more than you know? Do I know any more than you know? Does that guy over there know any more? Probably not. It's all brand-new. We don't know what the costs are.
There are certainly people out there, Councilman Lawson, that know more about medical marijuana and that industry than I do. But, you know, I think, to your point, it's professional.
But they don't know about medical marijuana in Nevada, because it's never happened here before.
That's correct.
So, we don't know what the costs are. We don't know what the revenue is. I think you've got to start somewhere. We can adjust. If we want to raise it, make it higher, Mike. Let's make it higher. I'm going to guarantee you, they're going to come anyways. And... But do you want to gouge them at the same time, or do you want to be fair? So, it's up to the council. But for my go... I just... I don't see this as anywhere near the 800-pound gorilla that everyone thinks it is.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Ms. Lawson.
There's... We don't know what those numbers are. But something tells me that there are six businesses out there that have done a business plan, worked on a model of what their revenues, projected revenues are going to be, what their projections or expenses are going to be. They're out leasing buildings based upon those numbers. They're out doing things. So, somebody... Somebody around here is kind of putting a business plan together to go and say what these revenues are going to be. I think somebody in northern Nevada knows about this industry.
I'm going to tell you, I'm privy to one of the business plans. It's a wild guess on their part, too. They don't know what they're going to do. They just happen to have enough money that it really doesn't matter to them. They're in it for the long run. So, if you've got enough money and you can afford to wait, you'll probably make money in the long run. But you're not going to know what it is in the short run. You don't know what the medical marijuana, how the new licenses are going to come out, how many more people are going to join up? Is there going to be a revolution in some type of strain of marijuana that cures athletes' feet as well as pain in your ear at the same time? Who knows? They're just... It's such an infant business that we can't really project any of that. So, for me, I'm okay. And if Mike wants a little higher, I'll be happy to go a little bit higher. But for me, it's... I just don't see it as big of a deal as everyone thinks it is.
Go ahead, Mike.
No, I'm just telling Ed, go ahead and make a motion there and see where it goes.
Okay.
All right. Well, I think the motion was basically, if I remember, to...
Proceed with the proposed amendments.
There you go. I move to direct staff to proceed with the proposed amendments on SMC Chapter 5.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
The motion by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes 3 to 2. Carrigan and Schmidt are in. Okay. You have your direction, I guess, huh?
Okay, thank you.
4.1 is comments from the public. Anyone want to speak, or comments from the public? Come on up. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Am I on? Good afternoon. My name's Katie Hoffman. I'm an attorney at Lionel Sawyer &amp; Collins, and I'm here today on behalf of Forever Green Nevada, a company that will be submitting applications to operate medical marijuana establishments within the city of Sparks. As many of you know, the CEO of Forever Green is Todd Binger, a former undersheriff for Washoe County. Mr. Binger couldn't be here this afternoon, but he joins me in thanking the council and staff for their work and for the opportunity to discuss these draft business licensing ordinances and the proposed operational requirements circulated by the police department. The people of Nevada and the state legislature have determined that it's important for patients to be able to access medical marijuana in a legal and convenient manner. Medical marijuana treats many serious and sometimes debilitating medical conditions. And for some of these patients, medical marijuana is an essential part of maintaining a good quality of life. And we think it's important that the city's licensing and regulatory scheme balance the needs of patients, business owners, and law enforcement. Our comments on the draft ordinances can generally be divided into three categories. Our first category of concern relates to some of the very detailed security requirements. The state's Division of Health, their draft regulations and the regulations they've implemented already contain very comprehensive security and operational policies and procedures. And all applicants are going to have to submit their application, with their application, a security plan, operation and policy procedure. All those types of things will be reviewed by the state and approved. And at best, some of the city's operational requirements either duplicate these proposed requirements from the state, and at worst, they further tie the hands of applicants and prevent them from really working with their security personnel and contractors to develop individualized programs best suited for their location, their clientele, and sort of the unique circumstances of their business. Our second area of concern is confidentiality. These draft provisions require medical marijuana establishments to submit sensitive information, like their security procedures, how they deal with cash, their operations for transporting marijuana, the time that it'll be transported, the routes they'll use. And we just want to make sure that that sensitive information will be kept confidential by the departments and personnel handling that information. Our final area of concern are the proposed fees. As has been noted, they're already five times what's going to be imposed on bars and other liquor establishments.
You've got the deal of a century. You going to say something about it? Go ahead.
Well, no. I think what I was saying is, we agree that there are some operational costs involved with these businesses. The proposed fees are already five times what's imposed on bars. And for patients who utilize medical marijuana, it's a very important part of maintaining their health and maintaining their mobility. And they don't view it as a recreational product like alcohol, tobacco, or gaming. So, we would just like the city to keep that in mind, what patients are really utilizing this product for. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, comments from the council and city manager. Okay, seeing no further business, we are adjourned.
Rescue work is very dangerous for first responders. Often it puts their lives at risk to save yours. So Sparks firefighters train to keep rescue skills sharp. Hello and welcome to Spotlight on Sparks. I'm your host, Adam Mayberry. In the next half hour, we'll take you behind the scenes in Ward 1. And we'll take you on the scene of job number one. And that's public safety. This emergency exercise drill feels very real from the bottom of a 10-foot-deep, dirty ditch.
This is one of the disciplines that our technical rescue team takes part in as trench rescue. We also do structural collapse rescue, high-angle rescue, low-angle rescue, and confined space rescue.
The first challenge for Sparks Fire Department's technical rescue team is how to work the site without making things any worse.
Yes, and what we do is we build shoring. It's going to keep the walls from collapsing in. And we do that from the top down. So as we go into the trench, we're pressurizing against the side of the trench until we can get down to the victim, get our people on the ground, and actually dig in the person out.
Listen as the instructor talks about stabilizing the trench sidewalks.
That's going to be important. So where can I find four-by-fours? What else can I use?
Shoring and stabilizing walls is just half the job. There's still an endangered citizen to rescue.
About 60% of trenches that have had a collapse in them will have another collapse. So if we just throw a ladder in there and rush in to rescue somebody, then we're taking the chance of everybody not going home. And that's not what we want to do. So we need to do it safely and make sure that we get the people out as expeditiously as we can.
Sparks Fire wasn't the only local agency to benefit from the day's training. The Sparks Community Services Department and the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District also participated in the advanced training event.
We have not had a trench class in several years due to budget constraints. But we were able to put some money aside and get one on this year. We've got several members of the technical rescue team who have not been through a trench class, so it's fairly imperative.
A former member of the technical response team is moving on to new challenges. Tom Garrison has had a long and varied career with the city's fire department and is now the new fire chief for the city of Sparks.
I've been with the Sparks Fire Department for 26 years. I got hired in July of 1987. I've been in the Truckee Meadows all my life. I moved here in 1961, and I lived on Moana Lane, which at that time was the edge of town. Okay, so I've seen this town, you know, grow up from very, very small beginnings to the size it is today. I went to school here. I went to school at Anderson Elementary, and then I moved out to the North Valleys and went to Lemon Valley Elementary. Trainer Junior High School, called it Junior High School then, Hug High School, and then I went to UNR and graduated with a degree in education, elementary education as well as secondary education. Started teaching and coaching. I taught in Ferley High School, and then I ended up being a head basketball coach at Monogue High School for a year. And decided to leave teaching and didn't know what my next move was going to be. It was probably an easy transition. It's very, very similar, even though when you're coaching, you lose games. You know, when you lose games in the fire service, it's a lot more serious. Okay? I was out of education and kind of bouncing around jobs and not really knowing what I was going to do with my future. And I was sitting at the intersection right over here at Rock and Victorian, and a fire truck drove by. And the person driving the fire truck was a guy I used to compete against in high school. And I thought, Gary's driving a fire truck. That looks so exciting. And I thought, maybe I'll give that a try. And a little while later, they had an application process, and I applied and took the test. And, you know, I guess it was meant to be. Well, I started when I was 30 years old, so I was relatively old for a rookie firefighter. Very intimidated, very nervous about what I was going to be doing. Well, when I started, I was hired with a group of 12, which at that time was the largest single hiring in the history of the Sparks Fire Department. And I was hired because they were opening Fire Station 3 on East Greg Street. So at that time, there were two fire stations in the city of Sparks. The station here on Victorian and the one on Berry. There were, I think, three fire engines with three persons on each fire engine and one truck company with two people. So really, we almost, not quite doubled, but almost a third more people were... We expanded the staffing by almost a third just with our hiring. I spent seven years as a firefighter and then got promoted to an operator. Spent a year doing that, which actually was the most fun job in the fire department. Driving the fire trucks is just a blast. But then, a year later, promoted to captain. And I spent 12 years as a captain before deciding to change direction a little bit and go into training. Spent a couple of years in training and then promoted to a division chief. Spent four years as a division chief, and then this job came open. And I think I enjoy the challenge. Every day is different. There's no real rulebook for leadership positions. There's no procedure manual. It's more common sense, doing what's right, treating people how you would want to be treated. I can remember when the edge of town was, you know, Reed High School. And, you know, none of the north, you know, Wingfield Springs or, you know, Los Altos area, none of that was there. So I remember when that was developed and think, wow, this is really going to stretch us. And, you know, we've grown and tried to keep pace with the needs and the risks in the community. As new areas developed, we worked with developers to get fire stations built. As soon as so many houses were built, you know, they had a requirement to build fire stations. And then we had the challenge to staff them. And at that time, the city was experiencing, you know, just this great acceleration of growth within the city. And budgets were good, and we were able to staff and buy fire trucks and fill fire stations with firefighters. Our staffing level five years ago, 2008, we had four persons per staffing across the board. And we have since reduced to three persons staffing across the board. That was a decision made by the city and fire department staff to make sure that we could still provide service to 95% of our call volume. We really believe that getting there fast, even with less numbers, is more effective than not having... closing down a fire station. My vision is to make sure that the fire department is designed to meet the needs of the community and also the risks of the community. Right now, probably my biggest challenge is making sure that not only is... do I have staffing to meet our most common or frequent call volume, which are EMS calls, which only need, you know, one engine company. But on the other end of the extreme, I have to meet those structure fires that need, you know, 15 or more people. Okay? So it's always a challenge to try to design a staffing model that covers both extremes. We have active mutual aid agreements with both Truckee Meadows in Reno and active automatic aid agreements. There are areas in our city that we need assistance. And we have areas in our city that are county pockets, and they need our assistance. So it's mutually beneficial. I think that, you know, we've done a great job for the community. We promise that we'll be there within six minutes, and 70% of the time, we meet that promise. We've never let people down. When they call us for help, we show up, and we show up quickly. We show up with skilled personnel. We show up with great equipment. And we show up with compassion and caring for, you know, taking care of the citizens.
Christmas time has always been special in the city of Sparks. In 2013, the city received its final Christmas tree from its sister city, Garibaldi, Oregon. In 2014 and beyond, the city and its residents will experience a new live tree that'll stand on Victorian Square for generations to come. The Christmas tree traveled almost 600 miles from Sparks' sister city in Garibaldi, Oregon. It's a gift from their city to our city.
Me and Dave Stein, Sr. goes out and looks for a tree for a day or two before, or a week or two before. And we probably look at thousands of trees before we find one that's full enough all the way around and straight.
Sister cities between Garibaldi and the city of Sparks have started some, close to 30 years ago. It actually started with the city of Reno as a lot of good things. It started in a conversation in a bar between a couple of people, and the next thing you know, the city of Reno had a tree being delivered the following week to support Christmas. And the following year, the city of Garibaldi set two Christmas trees, one for Sparks, one for Reno. And Reno decided not to carry on their relationship with the city of Sparks. It's been going on for close to 30 years. And the city has taken and sends a couple of people on up for their festival once a year, and then they try to send as many people as they can down for hometown Christmas parade and spend three or four days in the city of Sparks. And kind of exchange of ideas and things have increased towards it.
Yeah, I think it's sad, you know, after 28 years. But like I said, you know, if they feel it's ran its course, and I think the participation, you know, each year's got a little bit less.
Trying to get people from the Oregon coast, all of the other Oregon coast to come and spend the weekend in the city of Sparks, it's a big deal. And it's worked for a long time.
Many of the tree's handmade decorations were created by children participating in the city of Sparks youth programs.